Thank you, Mayor, Councilor. We wanted to get started. We'll first start with introduction of our new executive assistant. Carter, if you want to, or whoever wants to do the introduction, that'd be great.
You bet. Mr. Mayor, councilors, good evening. It's good to be with you tonight. We have the opportunity to have finally appointed our executive assistant. And you, Mr. Mayor, this is ultimately the position that replaced Renee, who had been with the city 35 years or something like that. Not all in the city manager's office, but certainly a long, long time with the city in general. Jackie Mahoney here, I'm going to stand Jackie, is our new appointment in that position. She's starting off doing a really, really good job and we're just thrilled to have her. And so we wanted to bring her by and have you put a face with the name because you will undoubtedly be interacting with Jackie quite a bit if you haven't already.
Great. I'm excited to work with everybody. Gets no one better, so.
Welcome, Jackie. The week I've been working with Jackie, she's been fantastic and seamless. Just jumped right in and done everything, so we appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jackie. Okay, meeting follow-up. Carter, do you have anything that you can follow up with us?
I do not.
Does the council have anything they'd like to follow up with the city manager of the council?
Nope.
Okay. All right, moving right along. We're moving at a good pace, Carter. He'll anticipate this is going to be this pace all night. Code enforcement follow-up. Go ahead, Carter.
Thank you, thank you. You will recall that code, excuse me, community development came forward a number of weeks ago in a work session format to talk about a number of things that they wanted to tackle as it relates to amendments to ordinances and practices and so forth that those ordinance amendments could support. That would ostensibly help to improve what it is that they do in the variety of things that community development works on. Tonight would be that first installment of changes that they hope to gain your support for in the form of dealing with vehicle towing fees. They worked very closely with the attorney's office to bring you a draft proposal. And so with that, if I could defer to Mr. Nelson to walk us through that, I'd appreciate that.
Great. Thank you, Mayor, Council. So what we discovered after sitting down together is that this is a much more complicated issue than we initially anticipated. The sheriff's department has recently instituted some changes in their handling vehicle toes, which has ripple effect for the city. There's some additional statutory provisions that we've become aware of. And so the reason we have very little time tonight is that we're still in the process of gathering data and working through this. I know that code enforcement staff is working with the PD. We do believe that we'll be able to bring forward some proposals to kind of lend some consistency to the process and to create some efficiencies. But because of the higher than anticipated level of complexity, we're still working through it. So nothing substantial to report other than it hasn't dropped off the radar. Moving forward.
Do you want to have any questions for Carter or Eric? And this is just for informational aim, this.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Moving on. Transit bus pass program. Go ahead, Carter.
Mr. Mayor, the opportunity exists for us in concert with the FTA and of course the transit operation to consider transitioning to a pass program away from sort of the older program of, you know, hard tokens that we've used for 40 some years that the transit program has been in place here in Casper. This is one of those opportunities that we would like to take, which I liken to moving from paper and pen to computers is the transition that I view this as. With that improvement, if you will, on that transition, we have the opportunity to improve a lot of the data that we collect, a lot of the reporting that we can produce and a lot of the good things that come when you go to a more integrated automated system. It's like any other part of the operation that we've considered in the past. So if it pleases the council, we'd like to go through this possibility with you tonight, talk about some of the virtues that we see in doing so and entertain any questions that you might have with respect to this possibility.
Carter, Vice Mayor had a question.
Sure.
I was just curious. So I know that you're looking at going to the cards with, and I'm not sure because I didn't see anything in our notes. Would a person have the ability to have the pass just on their phone and then be able to scan it in kind of like you would in an airport or something?
I love that question. And it's not one I can answer, but I bet your team could. And so if I couldn't defer to them, the experts, that'd be great.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Transportation team.
Ellen Becker. Good evening, Council. Mr. Mayor, Councilor. I wanted to kind of kick it off. Mr. City Manager did a fabulous job. I wanted to.
Thank you, other Carter. A little bit of history on transit operations for some of our newer council members. The city of Casper assumed operations in May of 2021 and rebranded as Casper Area Transit. We have worked diligently since that time, really to establish even a stronger relationship with FTA. And again, they are the major funder, along with YDOT, for the funds that we get to operate the transit system. And again, we service not only Casper, but the county as well as Evansville, Mills, and Barnum. And with this relationship, we saw them the first of October at the Y-Trans conference, which was held here. And really partnering with FTA on excellent reporting, which we have to do as the National Transit Database every year. And then those numbers help delineate what kind of an amount of federal funding we get. But again, with that, we had made kind of a commitment to you all as well as to the riders when we took over the operations that we weren't going to change anything that first year. So from May of 2021 really through 2022 fiscal year, we kind of kept operations just like they were. But since then, we have been working with the rebranding. We have done some signage changes that we've brought to you. We've added some different route changes that we've put into place. We've really upgraded our dispatch software, but we have been making, we feel, excellent service improvements. So tonight, Scott Drescher, our transit manager, is going to step through some of these more detailed questions that council will have. But I wanted to pull it in to our core values first off. Our core values, again, the acronym is Casper. Truly, the ones that this new program with passes truly relates to is responsiveness on really being able to keep track of our data and our ridership. It truly pulls into professionalism to bringing our transit operation forward to be competitive with any transit operation in the country, and we really are working. Pam Jones is here also as a key member of our team, as our grant specialist managing all the funds, but we have really worked to bring this program forward. So we've got responsiveness, we've got the actual professionalism, and efficiency, you're going to hear referenced, because as Carter indicated, moving from little plastic tokens that Scott's going to show you that we have to manually clean at the end of each day after we count them, is very slow and archaic, and being able to get into a system where we can scan and be able to have that data immediately uploaded into our dispatch software system and then on for NTD reporting truly is very efficient. We also are considering this a win-win for our stewardship for value in really being able to keep track of our subsidies that we honor. And we do have a subsidy aspect with transit, but also accountability. And we want to have rider accountability with, truly having ridership, knowing who's getting on to those buses, and making sure that they are where they need to be. So the accountability. And finally, you will hear from Scott, our plan for the communication plan rollout to the agencies that we serve, and how we'll let our riders know about this program. So what we're asking from you tonight is direction on what our proposed rollout date of this is. And in the memo, you'll see that we had proposed March fourth as the cutoff of accepting the tokens and moving fully to the new pass program to allow for ample communication, but also transition with our rider team and having a chance to sit down actually with agencies here in Casper and go through the plan. So we do want direction from you all after you hear the plan, whether you think March is good, or if you want us to delay it further, that is what we're seeking from you tonight. So Scott Drescher, our transit manager.
Thanks, Liz. Hi, Scott. Mr. Mayor, councilors, it's good to be here with you this evening. As has been spoken, the main justification for this change is to improve record keeping in general when it comes to riderhip, but also improve the process of bus ridership for both rider and transit personnel. The FTA has encouraged us and requires all recipients of grant funding, and the city of Casper is one of those, we are a direct recipient of that, to offer reduced fares to seniors, individuals with disabilities, Medicare recipients during non-peak hours. We don't have peak hours and non-peak hours, so that's a little redundant in there, but Casper Area Transit currently offers this fifty percent discount to seniors, people with disabilities, and then we offer a similar discount of twenty-five percent to students of all ages. So they, we have some people that come in that are college-aged from, in their, you know, later college years and stuff. And so we do offer that to students. We've made efforts to work with outside organizations, but to keep accurate records, but there tends to be a little bit of a loss as far as what we can do with that. I'm going to set this down for a second. I have visual aids, so this is good. So we have sort of the old way that we had these and the new way. So we've used tickets on the, on the assist side like this. I can pass those around a little. And we've used tokens. These are clean. You guys can kind of see these. The white ones are the student ones, the green ones are the, there's some for everybody. The green ones are for disabled, the white ones are student ones, the gray ones are just general public, the purple ones we subbed in as general public ones for a while when we ran out. And so there's an idea right there. I will pass these around a moment. So the other transit agencies, there we go, my back, thank you. Other transit agencies nationwide have historically issued eligibility passes or IDs requiring documentation of need and qualification prior to granting reduced fares. With this transition to a pass-based system, we will work essentially the same manner as requiring the individual volunteer demographic information so then, so that an accurate determination can be made. Agencies may purchase anonymous cards under an agency name with a predetermined dollar value or number of rides, but these purchases will not be eligible for reduced fare without them providing some demographic information so that we know that that individual user is qualified for it. Casper Area Transit can provide fare cards that are available in numerous formats. So I have these right here. Let me break away again. So for the fixed route, there's that. I'm going to, I'm going to hand them around a little bit further. You guys can pass them down. Step on some. And then these are for the. So that's how the, that's how those will work, is a scannable QR barcode. The short number that's on there, that's like a number, and then there's five digits or whatever. It's a much longer number than that. It's like a thirty-digit long number in the computer system. I don't need to go into minutia of why that is, but, but they're, they can be assigned and with a value on there. You can put a name on there. We can anonymize it. So if a homeless shelter needs to do it for somebody, and they need to keep it anonymous, we can put on their homeless shelter number thirty-seven or whatever, if we need to keep it anonymous. But it just gives us a lot more flexibility in being able to, to provide the service. And it also gives, I think, a lot more responsibility to individuals to hang on to that as their own bus pass. With the tokens, what we've seen is that, what we've seen with those is that there's just not as much accountability. You may have passing around and trading off tokens, some sales of tokens, some other things that happen, and we can't really control that after the fact. And it's, I think it skews the numbers a little bit of who the ridership really is. So, but with the phase out of tokens, a determination must be made as to when we'll no longer recognize or accept them as a legitimate fare for ridership. We suggested March fourth, as it gives us time to be able to speak with them. Agencies can, for agencies that have in the past purchased bulk amounts of tokens, they can certainly convert those over into credit in the system. And so one of the most positive reasons that we're doing this is that the, it saves on a lot of the physical aspects of the tokens. These kind of got stalled right here. We're going to, I can try and pass them around. You guys can look at them all overnight, whatever, but they come in in varieties of cleanliness. And so what they'll do at the end of the night is they will, will wash the tokens, basically put them in a nylon bag, let them soak for half an hour, rinse them off real good, and then re-sort them the next day when they dried off. And so there's a lot of time that goes into that when we're sorting through airboxes, whereas with the scannable card, I scan the thing on the bus, I get on, I get off, and it's all done. And that's how we're hoping it will work. That's what we're hoping for.
Carter's point, right now, our drivers keep manual logs of who their ridership is, and they turn these logs in at the end of the day to Scott's admin team. So they'll log that they've had this number of riders. They will try to classify it as to whether they're senior students, the disabled, and that is all a manual process by the drivers. They turn it into the team. The team then proceeds to key it into a spreadsheet, and now it'll be scanned in because we will have the data on those cards that say that Citizen One Oh One is a male, whether he is disabled and has a discounted card, or whether he is full fare pay. All that data will immediately go into the system, and then we will be able to process that again between Pam, Scott, and I doing this National Transit Database reporting on a consistent basis for FTA. So no more of hash marks and numbers and all the manual.
The other advantage is that with the iPads, the driver will be able to scan them on at a certain stop. So we'll know how many people are getting on at one stop, getting off at another stop, et cetera. It'll give us a lot more. What they have now is essentially just a manual clicker that they sort and make their best guess based on what they're paying with. If it's a silver token, we know it's a dollar fare. If it's a green token, we know it's a fifty cent fare. If the person appears to be old, we give them the discount for that. We don't make it, make an issue over it. For the most part, we don't make an issue over any of it, but we just believe that this will give us better record keeping, not only for who the individual is and whether they're qualified for the discounted fare, but it will give us a better accounting for which stops are doing good, which stops we maybe can phase out and put more attention on another place later on down the line, because there are some stops on some of the routes that you never see anybody.
We are required by the FTA to do a route analysis every five years, so that is always good to have our own data for that. And if people were to say, hey, what is, what is your busiest stop? That kind of information, we can go readily with.
Carter, did you have something?
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd like to have either Liz or Scott talk about the ways in which people or entities or companies or whatever can still donate in terms of providing some access for those that are under privilege.
So the cards, the cards can be made in any way, shape, or form. We can do them as a monthly pass where you set like a time limit on it. So if I went in on November fourteenth and bought a thirty-day pass, it would expire on December fourteenth, or you'd probably want an extra day. So December fifteenth is, anyway, whatever. But as far as, as far as that goes, you can do it that way. We can set it up with a limited number of rides, which is very similar to the subsidy programs we do it now, where we send a person out for thirty days. They can have forty tokens. It essentially gives them fare to a destination and back from a destination is what the idea is. Five days a week, four weeks a month. That's how the forty tokens is intended to be. A lot of people will blow through those pretty quick line, but it's, that's the subsidy program. And so the, the way that we could do it on there is set it up with a number of rides. You can also set it up as a cash card. So if you wanted to put twenty dollars on there because you know you're going to use it once in a while, you could do it that way. And we can set it up so that they are under, you know, Scott Drescher's name, under Liz Becker's name, under a specific name, and we can anonymize them if we need to. So if we are working with, but like I said before, the homeless shelter, or with any other type of group, if the YMCA decides to buy some, they could certainly purchase some. But if they want the discounted fare, they just need to provide a little bit of information about the individual so that we know it's legitimate.
So we have met with CWCC, and if they have a client that is now discharged out of the center, they would be given a preloaded bus pass and be able to utilize that. If they need to come back into treatment, it can be reloaded. But to Carter's point, if we have any charitable organizations out there, yes, we know we do, whether it's the churches or our civic organizations that want to contribute for bus fare to these organizations, they can easily write a check to an organization, whether it's Central Army Counseling Center, the YMCA, and be able to utilize that to load these passes for those patrons that need those rides. So that's how it can be done. But coming in and necessarily writing a check to Casper Area Transit, we need to be specific on who the recipients are, so that we know, are they seniors? Are they students? If Casper College wanted to load up and provide those maybe to some of their students, maybe non-traditionals, or do a kickoff program, they were using, partnering with them. So the ability to make donations into this program is just as it always has been. They'll just be better record keeper.
Welcome, Vice Mayor, then Amber. Go ahead.
Just a question. So a lot of times when you get these cards in various places, you have to register the card, and then it captures some basic information of who. Will these cards have that ability to essentially register them?
Yep. Mr. Mayor, councilors, yes, to answer that question, that is excellent. And one of the things that we already do with the subsidy program is we capture a name and some information about them, address vitals, whether they meet the age requirement for the, for a discount or whatever the case may be, whether they're disabled. We don't do a lot. We don't need like a doctor's note or anything like that. We basically go on their word of things, and, and that's fine. But yeah, we do capture that information, and it would be, it would be tied to them. The cards have a five-dollar replacement value, but I would put five dollars worth of fare on there if they had to replace it. It's, we're not trying to make money on them. The cards themselves are less than a dollar with the lamination and the little sticker on there. And so to answer your other question, as far as the phone goes, theoretically, you could take a picture of it, but they're not set up in any way through like an Apple Wallet or the Google Wallet or anything like that to be able to use the barcode yet. There are really, if you look at like an Apple Wallet, the transit agencies, there are very few that are set up yet on there, and they're working through it. A lot of them in China, but not with.
Will it work if, yeah, the picture of it, though?
It would, except for I'm, I'm not as comfortable with that in that someone could take a picture of their monthly pass and then share it with ten friends, and if they're all out there using the same thing. So that's why we've, we've made the cards hard to copy with laminating and with the holographic sticker on there. And that's what, that's one of the issues that we have been working on.
But to maintain some of the anonymity, we, there were options for photos, but we did not want to try to do all that in photos, like we have with, any of us might have with other cars and who else.
Amber.
Two questions. One, that's a little more related to what we were just talking about. If there's not photos on the passes, but yes, you could take a picture, you could send it, you could also just pass your card off, right, to somebody else. So I'm, I'm not totally closing a loop on how it necessarily helps from an accountability standpoint. Do the drivers get, does it populate on a screen in front of them with the demographic information that they're supposed to be cross-checking, or what is that?
Pretty much just the name, and if it has a balance, it would say the nineteen dollars left on there, or the number of rides that are left, but it would have a name on there. So other transit agencies use something a little more stringent, where they'll have an ID card for people, and they may make those last for five years or one year, depending on what the qualifications of the individuals are. And so.
But from an accountability standpoint, if you've been issued a pass from an agency and you're in a temporary living environment, you need a pass, and you proceed to take your thirty rides and pass it around to all your friends, and you're out of rides for the month, to go back to the issuing organization, that's where the accountability comes in. They're going to say, and, Councilor Amber, your rides are all used, you know, and that's where we really want to get that, that stewardship in there for us to understand our subsidy rate correctly, but also the accountability that if you're out there willy-nilly using up those rides and passing them around, that's going to, maybe you won't get reloaded for another couple of weeks. But again, we want it to be, because right now, those tokens are used as currency on the street. We want there to be more accountability with the cards, so that, again, people who aren't needing the rides are using it correctly.
Okay.
So it may not come, just to add on to that, Mr. Mayor and councilors, it may not come up until the next month after, but if I bring in Liz's card, they're not going to let me renew it under Liz's name. If I bring in somebody else's card, there, that's the thing, is that when they come in, they have to show us who they are, or we have to know who they are when we're renewing it and we're refilling it. And it needs to match up that barcode number, and that's how we renew it at that time.
Okay. And my second question, I think you're speaking to it a little bit right now, but what is the user interface like to, to get a card, to reload a card, et cetera?
Currently, we're, we're, to answer that question, thank you for that. Currently, we're in our infancy on it, and we're doing it through the office as we speak. And so for them to be able to do it, they would set it up that we don't have anything like kiosks as of now or internet access for them to be able to see it on there. It will display when they use the card, when the, either a date ends of the validity of it, or the number of rides, or the amount of balance. It will always show that on the, on the display that's on the iPads that are going to be in the vehicles, but it, there's currently not a way. We're working, we're going to look into that with, with the finance department. There's going to be a way to be able to have people renew it online.
Mr. Mayor, Councilor, even now, we have people come into the office to, again, repurchase. So we're continually trying to improve that process, and Scott is very much in the technology with his background, so we can begin to look at the online capability.
Okay.
Down the road.
Thanks. Jenna.
All right. I feel like that your clientele is.
All right. I feel like that your clientele is, just that last statement that you made us feel like your clientele is the people who still go to the bank, you know, for that one-on-one personal and socialization. And I think there's a big, something to be said for that because they do want that interaction. So, so I'm glad you're going to accommodate it. Um, even when you do go forward. Um, I had a question though, like when, as I've been to other cities where they do this and it's fabulous. I think it's really convenient and it works and totally support it because it's efficient and it's effective. But so the people who just show up at a bus stop, well, how do they get on? If everything's QR code, do we have like a signage? Because these other bigger cities that I've been to, they have a sign, they have a QR code. You download the app, you get the ride and that's what you scan on with the bus. So when people just show up at the bus stop, how do they ride?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, councilors, to answer that question, that's excellent. Um, we will still have fare boxes. So that if someone's just paying cash, we're not going to deny someone that's paying cash. Uh, if they have tokens, we're going to set those up until whatever the designated time is. Um, and then the passes will, will slowly be phased in and take over what we do. But there will still always have a fare box to be able to accept cash at the time.
So, well, that I'm mainly asking for like tourists, but you know, just show up at a bus stop as a way to get around town. So they can do just the regular cash fare.
Yeah.
But some of, like how much is that? Is there a sign that says that? Is there, you know?
Yes, um, to, to go over that, we consider, uh, general public fare as a dollar and then free transfers between buses. Uh, senior citizen or disabled fare is fifty cents. That's what the green tokens represent currently. Um, that's the difference between the silver and the green. Student fare would be seventy-five cents. And we don't need to be super sticklers about it. If somebody wants to represent themselves as sixty-two or older is what we consider senior. The FDA says you have to be sixty-five or under. They don't have a.
Would you leave on a student?
Sure.
Oh, cool. Cause I am.
Yeah.
I'm just curious.
So that's, but yeah, I mean, there, we're not forbidding anyone from paying cash. We'll certainly have fare box systems on the, on the vehicles. And then the drivers can manually add things on there for when somebody pays with cash. But it's, it just is a lot more easier, a lot more easy in the long run to have the automated passes. Cause you'll be able to just scan, scan, scan.
Yeah.
And people can just get right off.
Be insane. Great.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thanks Scott and Liz for all the information. I'm very much like a port moving off in the tokens. That sounds like a nightmare, um, and very old school. So um, I'm totally cool with the direction we're going. I do have a question though about like, uh, you mentioned CWCC. I used to work up there and, uh, they would, folks would just, uh, be gifted token. My, my question is, my guess is these cards are only going to be printed from our office, the transit office. And so if CWCC has somebody up there that they need a discounted fare or something from the bus, they can't print those cards from there. How, how does somebody in that sort of setting get a discounted fare?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, councilors, uh, to answer that question, another, another, uh, place that we work with CWCC is one of them. Um, it was a W, yeah. Um, a lot of different places. There's a senior services is through. My brain's gone blank.
Yeah.
But through them, we're, that's where we're offering that they could buy a certain number of twenty dollar passes or whatever, or whatever amount, just as long as it's over five dollars. Um, they could, they could purchase them and pre-purchase them and have them on hand. And then if they start to get low on them, then we could just resell them. But the, the good thing about that is if they keep that number, that little five-digit code, we can generally look it up by that unique number and then add to it. And then if they issue it to somebody, even if they want to keep it anonymous, you have CWCC client number one fifty-two, you could have them go back and see who their client one fifty-two is. And that way, we don't know it's John Smith, but we know that that client meets these criteria and we load it up with the right amount of fare.
So Mayor Counselor, when we met with them, just as they would have pre-purchased tokens to pass out as clients are being discharged out of treatment, they would get, um, preloaded cards. And yes, it would be up to them to make sure if it's a student, that they would issue a student pass, um, with just an anonymous number to match their database. If it's someone that's eighteen or under, or if you've got, um, middle-aged individual, they'll still have their own coding system and probably assigned a number that is affiliated with that individual. The address would strictly be with CWCC. At that point in time, not a personal address, but we would be able to track it back. And again, if that individual used their five or ten rides, needed to come back into treatment, to Scott's point, we'd be able to work it up by the barcode and reload that card. So again, just as they come in to get tokens now, we would load them up with these passes.
Thank you. Hello, thank you. Uh, that makes sense to me. I'm curious how the demographic information, let's keep using CWCC. Somebody gets a pre, you know, CWCC buys a bunch of preloaded cards, they're giving it to an individual. How did this, how does the demographic information go with that individual and that card? Do they have access to our FTA database to be able to plug that information? How, how do we reconcile the documentation?
It's a good question. Excellent question. Uh, Mr. Mayor, counselor, uh, that is, uh, that is something that we need to work with them. Uh, what we've, what we've had, um, in the past is, is a an agency form for them to report back. And that's where we sort of had some mixed, mixed participation in. And so to the extent possible, we'll ask them to give us, you know, the age of this individual, the gender, the, whether or not they have a disability, a qualifying disability, or if they're a Medicare recipient. And so for the most part, people at CWCC, we would consider that a yes. And then the age would be one thing, but it would just be, it's one of those things where we can't just assume about things and about people, whether they are disabled or not, whether they have a qualifying, uh, reason, whether they're a student. And so we, we'd like to be able to prove that. If they're willing to sign off on that and say that, yes, this individual, this John Doe, number fifty-five or whatever, is, is a qualified individual, then we go with it.
And they'd be able to update their information with us, um, after the fact that they needed to by the card issuance.
Thank you.
Randy.
So I honestly don't know if my office still buys tokens. I'm assuming that we do. But are single rides going to be just done and gone then? Because we have a doctor's office. If the weather's bad, sometimes we have patients to take a bus. We just, we used the paper things the last time I was actually in the front office, but not helpful, I know. So I assume we have tokens, but we just buy normal dollar pa- uh, is it going to be something that we just need to be like, here's your dollar, go good on the bus? Because I don't want to track passes or, and I'm not going to give them a five dollar pass because legitimately we would use it one time and never see them again, presumably.
Mr. Mayor, counselor, that is an excellent question and it is a legitimate one. I don't have an answer for you at this moment as to what we would best be able to do. Um, the passes we have it set up, theoretically, if you're purchasing them, they don't cost more than a dollar. So if we needed to send them out, it's not as cost effective. We want it to be as, as cost effective as possible. But for somebody that's just in a stuck position, um, that's kind of the thing is we would have to, we'd have to see what's best, um, and move forward with them. Uh, using cash or using another way, but.
Yeah. Um, Amber, then Steve.
Um, just more of a note as you go through the, like rollout process with this, is another good place to engage the council for people with disabilities to get like feedback on how to make sure that it's, you know, user friendly and people are comfortable with the transition.
Yes, we're members of council. Scott does participate in those meetings. So we wanted to visit with you all first and then at the next disability council meeting. This will be one of our shows.
Cool.
And additionally, I talked with someone from the school of wine. She encouraged us to get some, I guess, basically they make Braille label makers. And so just if we do have people that are visually impaired and they identify as that, we can get them something that's tactile that you can put on the card so that they know what the card is, whether they can read Braille for lack of a better term or not, but, uh, they can at least see and, and feel what it is. We thought about going to hexagon shaped bring tokens for a while, um, to, to have a difference between them. So people would not have, uh, a difference on them, but they were slightly more expensive and we just decided to go this way. So, sure.
Steve.
Roughly what spend each of your fares are cash versus the tokens?
Mr. Mayor, councilors, this is a, what we're looking at right now is probably about sixty, sixty-five percent come in as tokens. Uh, we haven't broken it down yet and it's, and that's one of the problems is that if we send out, um, a bunch of bulk tokens, there could be one that comes in for the month. There could be fifty percent that come in from the month. But we are sending sometimes about four thousand out a month, uh, through just a subsidy program alone. We're not selling nearly anywhere near that many. So I tend to think that probably ninety percent of the ones that come in on a monthly basis are from the subsidy program. Um, but I'd have to, I'd have, there's no way to really estimate.
And as a follow-up to that, did you say then that your cash customers, the driver was still going to be doing the?
Yeah. They can do it through the iPad, the same screen that they'll scan on. It gives you some options down below. You just have to scroll and choose student, senior disabled or general public fare or transfer. We'll have to do it for transfers because we're still going to be using the, the plastic transfer tokens for the time being.
Okay.
Yeah. I was just curious when our next, that analysis is due. You said every five years.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we did that in twenty nineteen.
Okay, we're coming up.
And it is funded through the NPO.
Amber.
Um, I want to just revisit, I, I think the only sort of downside to this that I've heard thus far tonight is sort of this limited ability to offer single ride vouchers for organizations. Um, I'm curious if you have any anecdotal information through working with partner agencies. To what extent are those, you know, would you say the vast majority of those, um, are providing many tokens, like a bundle of tokens to their users? Or are, are we, do we see a large percent of them use single rides as a, as part of their interactions with their clients?
Mr. Mayor, councilor, what we've seen is that most of, most of the, um, respondents that have sent back the form where we've asked for it, they'll write down that they sent twenty tokens with John Doe fifty-five or they sent out ten tokens with somebody. They're not reporting on one token. And that's, that's, I think where that, that is happening. Um, and that's where they're reluctant to do it because they don't want to sit there in minutia for the six hundred tokens they purchased. Do that. And so we will probably lose out on some of that flexibility. Um, so it is something that we should look at. There is nothing that would keep individuals from returning that pass to the, to the, um, agency that issued it to them. And then we can renew it, refresh it, change it over, take the rides. And any of these that are lost as well, they can be canceled. Just let us know if they have that little five-digit code number. They just let us know, I lost my pass, my wallet got stolen, et cetera. And we can cancel whatever the balance is, transfer it if we need to.
And Mr. Mayor, counselor, that kind of segues with our counselor Haskins. And I, I think that's a good one of these single rides. And as we do this rollout, we may hear from more doctor's offices that are issuing a dollar pass. Who will need to adapt to that. So thank you for bringing it up and Council Pollitt for pushing because, yeah, I did go look to it after that. Cause we do, we deal with bulk right now. So with this, it is going to be so much more efficient. But for these single individuals, we don't want to cross the ownership or the agency. So.
We could, one, one thing that I thought about that we could do with transfers, for instance, to keep it so that somebody doesn't say, yes, I need a transfer and then they go do their shopping and come back an hour later, which essentially breaks the rules of that. Is that there are paper transfers and paper transfer printers that you get. So in theory, we could come up with something that would be like a paper ticketing. Um, we work pretty closely with Tripmaster is who the, who the company is that does these. I just spoke with him the other day with some questions that I had. Um, and he was very good about answering them. Very good about saying, well, I'll have to look into that and get back with you. And so, um, but it's, it's something that I need to ask is how would they recommend to handle transfers? Um, because there are ways to do it. We just have to find the right one that works for us.
Sure. Any other questions? So Carter, do you need counsel to give a thumbs up for, um, the, uh, program to move forward? Um, what do you get, what do you need from the council?
That would be great. Mr. Mayor, that's counsel, right?
Yeah, the date. So what are we looking at for the date, I guess? March fourth, that's what you, that's what you're shooting for.
Mr. Mayor, we were hoping then to get some data as we finish up this fiscal year. Be able to, as we're working with funded, have some good data to work with still in this. That's why we wanted that three months for that.
Three months, okay, got you. Yeah.
Yeah, sorry. That was, I was just wondering, so if, yeah, when do these, would these start being implemented? On the floor or, okay, so there's not a, an overlap?
No, they're, they're, I'm sorry, um, I mean, they're not.
No.
Uh, there would, we could, we could theoretically put these into action within the next week or two. I just have to finish training the, some of the part-time drivers, the full-time drivers have all been through a nice little two-hour course on how to work it. And for the most part, they've been very receptive to it. Uh, I just need to finish the kinks and then when we implement it, it'll be a trickle, uh, that will eventually build up. But we, I, we're aiming for the first part of December is really what we're hoping for. And then we have three months to kind of transition the tokens out. If we need to delay that, we could, but that's what we're, that's what we're aiming.
So the fourth is going to be the drop dead date for tokens. Boy, I interrupted you. You're good. So is everybody comfortable with the fourth, um, as we start to look at the transition period, I guess?
I'm comfortable if you're comfortable.
Yep. You're good, Liz. Scott, you're good. Yeah. Awesome. All right. Everybody's good with it? Alrighty. Great. Thank you for moving us into the next phase of the twenty-first century. That sounds.
Baby steps.
That's, that sounds quite a bit of work.
Back. Do you guys want, if you want to take it, well, they haven't been activated. You know, it's five dollars. You can kind of see the. It'll scan and it'll come up with a big frown. But no, I mean, we're not trying to expel riders or anything like that. We're, we're aiming for is really just to have a better accountability. So if somebody's pass is expired by a day, our drivers will be able to see that and they can be flexible. If it's expired by three months, then yeah, probably you need to go renew that buddy. Uh, otherwise, yeah.
Scott.
Oh, yeah. We're out the other side of the table.
Those look pretty good though.
Yeah.
They, I, yeah.
Great.
Kind of appreciate it. Yeah. Thank you. Okay. Thanks Liz. Thanks Pam. Thanks Scott. Appreciate it. Okay. Moving right along, leadership selection and removal process. Uh, this is about two sections, it sounds like, when we're talking about leadership selection. And then also moving in and talking about the removal process.
Right. Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think that's a fair way to, to kind of break this up. Um, it's hard to believe that we're at the time of year where we need to have this conversation again. Uh, and without a doubt, um, invariably what happens is, uh, you know, council wants to take time to understand the process by which leadership is put into place. Uh, council will recall that, um, a year ago, uh, council gave us a little more definitive direction than we've had in the past in terms of having a process that we can essentially point to each year, uh, to, uh, to sort of prepare for this discussion and so on. Uh, different than what we've done in the past, however, we would suggest that pursuant to the way in which we move forward, uh, for this year's selection process doesn't change. We'd like to bring forward a resolution that memorializes the leadership selection process. Uh, unlike we've done in years past, so that we can have something memorialized, have something for council. Uh, unlike we've done in years past, so that we can have something memorialized, have something for council to. You know, reference and review and, and, uh. And essentially, um, hopefully beat that question to the punch, if you will, every twelve months. Um. And so i- if, if it pleases the council, we would like to move in that direction pursuant to what you recommend this evening. Uh, as council is aware, however, that recommendation, that suggestion and direction, if you will, that council gave us a year ago. Was really along the lines of a ranked choice voting process. Although we know that it's more of a polling process that largely takes place in executive session. Council also suggested, uh, you know, a couple of things to include as it relates to. The nomination process, the details of which Flur is gonna go over here in a little bit. But what we're hopeful for tonight is that the council will essentially adopt the process that we've been given direction for in the past. We move forward with the nomination process pursuant to a timeframe. And, uh, and we, uh, we, we, we go from there in terms of. Where, when it is that you'd like this to come back and, uh, uh, you know. Then, of course, we go into executive session to go through that polling uh process. The second piece of the discussion that we need to have tonight pursuant to your request is that of. Formalizing a process that the leadership aspect of the city council can be changed. Uh, when that is needed. Um, we have not had that process put into place in the past. Uh, pursuant to, uh, recent events, council requested that we give this some thought. And indeed, uh, we, we do have a, you know, a recommendation. That council can discuss and talk about and direct formally from here tonight as well. The basic thrust, the basic thrust with regard to what we would propose is. That indeed, a, uh, a super majority be given that authority to make those leadership changes. When, when it's necessary. That indeed, that, uh, that, that person or persons that are subjected to that. Leadership change be allowed to have a public hearing on the matter. And with regard to all of that, uh, the city attorney would recommend that whatever changes you do adopt. Be ensconced in ordinance so that again, that can. Uh, be memorialized and recognized over the period of time when this type of process might be needed. So yes, two, two phases of conversation tonight. And, uh, we would like to start with, uh, Flur giving you a rundown as to where we think we're at. Pursuant to the process that we think you directed us to a year ago, if that's okay.
Your honor, members of council. So when we visited with you earlier this year, um, council provided direction of very basically six. Basically, uh, move on, yep.
Yeah.
Okay, um. Uh, items. So the first was nomination process, so that council indicated support of providing the names to the city clerk. And having the city clerk check the nomination acceptance with whoever was nominated and then put together a ballot. Um, from there, council indicated that they would like to have five minutes, um, allowed. Or given to every nominee to provide a public explanation of why they want to be part of leadership. Uh, and then a straw poll would occur in an exec session. Um, for the straw poll, we would use ranked choice voting to count the votes. And that would be done by the clerk and attorney. And then they would tally the ballots and announce who had won in the straw poll. And that would all be done, like I said, in an exec session. And the last thing council supported was, we made a resolution. To memorialize all of this. And so this is where we're at right now. We would just like to take that next step and do that resolution if all of these items are still. Um, in accordance with your wishes, then we can put that all in the resolution and formally pass that.
So I guess we're kind of looking at, we have questions, one for Flur about this recommendation. Um, that we gave to the city, um, staff. Um, and if this is what was articulated back to us, if this is something, if there's anything else, I suppose, if we have some. Ideas if we wanted to add anything, um, so we could get that into a resolution, um, in the coming weeks. So, yep, correct. Yes. So Steve, I saw your hand first.
I still don't like the idea of ranked choice voting. Never have liked it. I think it leads to some bad decisions down the road. We did ranked choice voting for vice mayor. We still had to have a runoff even in that. Um. I think it just ought to be, if you wanna do it similar to the way we do our normal elections. Cause everybody throws their hat in, the top two vote getters go to the general election. So it would be two rounds, but basically you're done with it in two rounds. And then if somebody does want to change where they are voting, they actually get their choice. It isn't. Based on this.
Flur for ranked choice, when we decided we've been using ranked choice for quite a while?
Nope, just two years or a couple of years, rather.
Two cycles. Um, is there a benefit to the ranked choice?
Your honor, basically it saves a couple of steps. So essentially when you are asked to vote, you're given all of your nominees. Then you're asked to, maybe you do like first, who would like second, who would like third. And so what staff does is they take off the people that have the least number of first place votes. And so whoever has least will come off and they continue doing that until they can get those nominees. So rather than having to keep coming out and saying, okay, now we have a runoff between these three or these two. It would all be right there. And so it's easier and you don't have to keep voting. The idea is that you wouldn't change your vote. When you come back out, it would still, you'd still be able to indicate that in the first round because you know who you want first. And if that person comes off, you would know who you would like as your second choice. And so you would indicate that without having that extra step.
Other thoughts about the ranked choice versus, um, kind of what Steve was saying? I mean, I, yeah, go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, that was kind of my understanding, Flur, and so I, I'm curious, councillor Cathy. What is, you know, I'm following Flur's logic in the sense that. My first choice is gonna be one and if they drop off, then my next first choice would have been who I put in number two. What is, I guess. I'm seeking to understand your, uh, position to that a little bit.
If you start playing the math, you could wind up with somebody being in, in the position. Be it mayor, vice mayor, representative for the state, but you could wind up with the person actually. Never receiving any first place votes win the election. And I believe that is one of the issues that happened in Alaska the last election with ranked choice voting.
This August, I feel like I need like a flow chart to understand it, but I'm, how could we, how would you end up with somebody who didn't get any first choice votes? Winning the election? Can you? Can you walk me through that? Cause I find it to be.
I don't remember how it all worked out, but basically they wound up with a lesser choice. As they went through the ranked choice in Alaska.
Or is it possible for somebody?
I, I, I could definitely research this. I have not heard that. The way we've done it and the way I had it processed when I researched it. The person with the least number of first place votes would fall off. So I don't know how you could end up with somebody with no first place because you have to take the ones who have the most first place and they stay on the longest. And essentially you're just adding to theirs tally. So we take that off and then you count the next person. So I don't know how you would end up with somebody who hadn't received any first place. Just by the nature of the way you take off the individuals. I would really have to look at a study of how Alaska did that.
Yeah. I mean, I guess I'm, I've been uncomfortable with ranked choice and I think it's, it seems to be fairly fair. I mean, it's fair. And the process and, and I mean, I understand what you're trying to come from in that sense, but, but I. Understanding Flur doing the research to find how, how ranked choice works. Um, I, I guess I, I'm not feeling too. Apprehensive about ranked choice and that there's other council members. Or feel, feel strongly as Steve does. And I kind of saw you nod in there.
Well, I, because I was agreeing with Steve and, and here, because I'm, but I'm not. Fully understanding exactly the process. Can you say that again?
Well, basically.
How you want it.
Oh, I just wanna go ahead and just. Either vote for person A, person B, or person C. And if there are four people running for an office. You wind up taking out the bottom two and let the top two go ahead and. You're done with it.
Yeah, I'm following.
And it may be, depending on how it all works out, the person that you voted. For number one, or maybe even number two, didn't make it, but you would just as soon have number four as number three.
See what you're saying. How did you do it before you did rank?
Just like that?
Did exactly what I'm talking about.
Your honor, I'm like, oh, just like what you did?
Yeah.
Your honor, I mean, so previously, um, we went through a period where for a very long time, we did not have. Four people put their name in the hat. It was one nominee for mayor and it was a person who was vice mayor. Um, and then for vice mayor, there were maybe two people who would put their name in. And so this is, it was kind of a change that we saw that we had so many people putting their name in the hat for nomination. That's why we came up with the idea of ranked choice, just to provide that ease of not having to keep revoting or having a runoff between two. And in fact, the first year we used ranked choice, we didn't, we wouldn't have needed to do a runoff. Where you have two candidates because there was a super majority for the very first, first choice. So we didn't have to cut anybody off is what I think.
Yeah.
The one person won. So that's why we selected it, like because we hadn't before had that. So that's why it kind of, there was that shift two years ago.
Carter, in, in your history of working with other councils and seeing it, have you seen ranked choice before in the past?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, um, generally speaking, the, uh, the process has been. Very much along traditional lines wherein the ascension is prescribed in a lot of ways to the mayor's role. And, uh, and it, and it isn't hotly contested to me. And so. And so I, I agree with, uh, with the, with the, you know, Flur's view. That this is, was meant to try to streamline the situation. Where it's, it's not just a typical vice mayor to mayor ascension and others wanna. Kind of, you know, jump into place instead. So, um. I have to confess that typically what I've seen is more of the traditional movement over the.
Through the vice mayor's, she comes mayor. And there's no really contestant.
Exactly. It just isn't that contested, you know, so.
Might ask someone.
You bet.
To vice mayor, um, cause I'm trying to remember this whole. In January, after, after it all happened, who, we had a large number of people. That were talking, that voiced, that they didn't like the system. Do you remember? Why at all?
The, the specifics of why?
Yeah.
Are you talking about council or the public?
The public, when the public had voices to say when they didn't like the selections and stuff.
I think just that the only general thing that I have ever heard of is that they usually think that the mayor should be elected.
Right, no, I thought there was some controversy about the ranked choice and how they, there was some other people saying things about that. I just can't remember the specifics of. What that, the argument was between them, but. My other, um. Thing was is that I'm confused why we're changing, not, not just the ranked choice, but then. What we're adding in, what did you say, the speaking part?
So that was something that when we spoke to council at the beginning of the year, they indicated because in the past we've done this, um, just in the work session. And, uh, our senior attorney said that this is something that could be done in exec session. So then the ballots don't have to be made public and that was something that council decided that they would do that. And so there was a discussion of, let's let them at least have five minutes in public. To say why they want to be mayor and then, or vice. And then go into exec session. And so that was something that council provided, they indicated their support.
Right.
Okay, so I don't really see the point in that. I mean loosely, yes, but when we're doing it anyways. It within the leadership and the mayor's just the, I just don't understand why we have to do that. It sounds like you're opening up another. Can of worms per se, because if you're gonna. Do that in front of the public, then why not do the whole entire process in front of the public, but it's not a voted position, it's just a leadership position within the council. So, um. I'm kind of against the whole, because it doesn't matter. We're just doing it for each other in reality. You're talking to your other people. You know what I mean?
Go ahead, Flur.
Your honor, members of council, that was, that didn't come from staff and so. And all of this, whatever council's direction is, we're happy to change it. We just wanna make sure we have it exactly right before we even realize it in the resolution, so.
Go ahead, Em.
Um. We requested that opportunity to hear from nominees for our own. Education for our own benefit. To me, I, I, I don't care really if it happens in exec or if it happens in public, but I think for me, I'm super. I think it's super important to get that, um, discussion from folks because I voted now in several leadership elections. Based only on my experience working with folks, having no real understanding of what. Either interest in the position, what their strengths that they think they're bringing to the table, only based on the few, you know, opportunities I, I have to hear from them in, in meetings. Um, and so that was, I, I felt under. Equipped to make that decision. And I think Kyle expressed the same thing at, at one point and maybe some others too, but I think over the last. Many elections, it's like, I don't, I don't wanna feel like I'm voting on somebody without really understanding like. What they think they bring to that role and kind of like being able to give us a quick pitch about what they think they could do. I don't. Know that it has to be in public. I thought, I think that was maybe a suggestion from the attorney, but. Uh, you know, I, for me, that's not for the public's benefit as much as it is because it is our choice to make. It's for me to make a more informed choice about who I'm selecting for leadership.
Go ahead.
Well, then I feel like this. Being able to do that, I feel it's something that as a team of leaders up here, that it's something you should, we should know. Who are colleagues and know those certain things about those people. So maybe that's something that we can look to as. Maybe like a board retreat or a leadership, some kind of circle where we do that, where it's not. On camera, where you can get to know people more, you know, more personally and know exactly what the people, what, what your interests are and what. What your aspirations are. Is what I'm saying.
Great.
So I respectfully disagree on this one. I feel very strongly that it would have benefited. At least me for this first one because I did not know half the people on council. I knew, sorry, Lisa, like nothing about Lisa at all. I knew very little, I knew a little bit about Bruce, but like I really didn't know that much about them. So as an incoming council person, it would have been extremely helpful to me to know. Anything about some of them. I knew my word. But I didn't really know a whole lot about the other people on council when I came in and they were like, here, Brandy, vote for mayor. I probably might have made different choices had I known more about some of the people on council.
So five, give, okay, I understand that too. I'm just working this out in my head. So it's a work session. So I understand that too, but then what? What is the five minutes gonna give you? That a meet and greet prior to, you know, going into that first session, that new people on the dais that are coming into. What would five minutes? Would, what would you get out of the five minutes that they have to tell you what they're doing instead of like perhaps a meet and greet prior to get to know your fellow, you know. People on the board?
Well, I would have been there for certain, but. When we were invited to this, we weren't actually on council. We didn't have to go to all those meetings. I was there because I did feel like I should probably know what I was doing when I did actually take office, but. It was voluntary, so we wouldn't necessarily be able to make you or me or Mr. Bond actually have shown up to that meet and greet. And what if we didn't? Because we didn't feel like it was. We didn't have to, we were busy that day. You wanna hope that that's not going to be the case, but we don't know that that's not going to be the case. So I feel like we were there, it was time to vote. You have my attention. And what do I need to know? Hi. I have time to go to the six AMs and I will get up at six AM. I will be there. My job's going to let me go to these openings and river and cuttings. Absolutely, I will be there for a new police officer or fireman. You know, things I didn't even realize the mayor was doing until. I was in this office. So I feel like in five minutes, Kyle can say, you know, my job, I go to work every day, but I can leave for all those things whenever I want. Or leave that can say, I love six AM. And the things that I didn't know, they would have said that. Yes, I have time to do it. Yes, I'm willing to do it. Yes, I'm going to keep my own opinions to myself with, because I haven't talked to you yet and I don't really know where the rest of you stand. Yes, I'm going to keep my own opinions to myself with, because I haven't talked to you yet and I don't really know where the rest of you stand and I might get on Facebook. So there would have been information I would like to think they would have provided me in five minutes. And maybe not, but maybe if I listen to Lisa for five minutes, I'm like, oh God. You know, maybe, maybe not her. I don't know, but I feel like in five minutes you can learn a lot about a person.
Do you have a question based on this, with this? Yeah, go ahead.
This is for Flor. Um, and, and just for your comment, I'm a realtor, none of us like six AM. Um, so I guess since we changed this and so I guess. If, if we as the council changed the procedure. As of two years ago, I'm curious on how. That was allowed to kind of just happen that we weren't directed that this is the standard and this is kind of how things go and then. Things kind of just got kind of scrambled from that point. It's, and then if. Traditionally, then the vice mayor always would move up to the mayor position. It's, I don't know, I guess, so that's probably why there's so much confusion is just, it's just been recent that we're just. Changing everything and I'm just trying to figure out why we changed that to begin with.
From like the vice mayor?
From, well, from, because it all changed two years ago, so what had happened at that point in time. To, to have us just scramble everything and then we've been in a mess. So Carter says that he knows.
It is okay with, with Flor, I'll try to pilot that question a little bit. Any of the changes that were made in the process were not changes that staff mandated. They were always and every time, changes that council requested be done. And it was likely due to the changing dynamics with respect to who wanted to be in leadership. Uh, staff did not direct it. Staff did not say, you need to do this. It was always council saying, what are some options? And we like that option better. And uh, and, and over time, it just kind of became more of the norm. Mostly because uh, the, the changing dynamics of how. Folks became interested in leadership.
Yeah, and I would say based upon also historic, looking before the two years, before we've kind of in the last two years, been previous to that. Uh, before that, it was just tr- traditional, the vice mayor. Was selected and then would take this mayor seat and there was really no contest, contesting of it. And then, I don't know, I probably look to find what year it was, but I, then I can kind of start to see when there was starting to create. This level of, um, that the seat was. I don't know, I, I just wanna be really super careful that, that we have to remember what this seat is. That this seat, it, it, it is a very ceremonial seat. It really leads these conversations. We do a lot of like ribbon cutting and we do a lot of things like that. But it's, but really it's city manager does the day to day operations and I use the, the term weak mayor. In this, in the sense, and, and I think, and I've said this before publicly, I don't know how this has become such a contested seat. Because it is, there are, it is time consuming. You are the face of the council and you get the brunt of it. You get the brunt of a lot of the negativity, you know, I, some people had sent me some stuff saying, you know, um. Cities do it, the mayor's doing this and, and really we're not doing any of them. I'm like, you know, we work together as a council and so it's. It's not as advantageous as everybody I think thinks it is. And, and I think that we've kind of moved, moved that direction and I think we've kind of seen that direction of the seat. And it's a glorified, we're chair of this board. And my job ultimately, and I think Carter put it perfectly, um, at leadership, uh, meeting this morning, this afternoon, is to facilitate. The, the democratic process that happens here. That's, that's my job and for you to be heard and not for me so much to be talking all the time. But for you to be heard mostly. And that's what's important about this seat. So, and I think kind of to what Jenna's point is asking about, it just, somebody that says. You know what? I wanna do this. I wanna be able to represent you. I get it. I'm not gonna, I don't wanna sit and. And this, this isn't about me. This is a question of how we facilitate and work together as, as a, those are the types of things that I wanna hear from, from a candidate running for. I'm putting in for that. Yeah.
Thank you. That, that's what I was trying to, to get at too. I'm like, we're not, it's not a show pony contest of who gets to be that. It's like who can be that board chair? Like you said, you made that reference. And that's what it is. So I'm like, do we need to get up and make it into more of a production when leadership is something that you're gonna see? When we're working together. And so that, thank you. That was a lot of what I was doing.
Stephen and Amber.
One of the things that started some of this was back when Ray and I were on council. And we wound up with a new group of people came in and we wound up then. That basically the vice mayor, they bypassed everybody in the election of the mayor. And that didn't work out too well, but uh, I think that was the year that I was elected as vice mayor. And then I lost the next election and to Council Walsh. And then you folks reappointed me by the same token. That's why I turned around, cause I'd only been out what, two years and I started running for mayor, cause I had been vice mayor. By the same token, this council turned around and elected a one-year council member to mayor. Which that kind of blew everything and. That person wasn't a vice mayor either. So those things started jumbling all of the process up. And uh, that's kind of where it all came from is through what's. What's happened, which I think that really surprised a lot of people when we elected a, a one-year council member. To be mayor.
Two things to say, the, the first is that I think that. Um, we need to develop. Well, for, for me, the, the five-minute opportunity is really important. Not necessarily for people who have been working together for a while, but we have to remember at the election cycle changeovers, that there are people who. Haven't been here and don't know any of us on council and that they can be nominated. As leadership potential, even if they haven't yet served any time on council. And so to. So we wouldn't know those folks who came in and were, would potentially be on our ballot. And so I don't feel like we always. Know, so like for this group, sure, like I would feel comfortable because we've had enough time. So this next January election, I'm not so. You know, stressed out about, but for a following one where we've got new members or where we've got. Uh, who are either voting or up for leadership, I think like. It's in those moments where it's important to gather as much information as we can and we may not have. Had any time under our belts whatsoever and we were put in a position to suddenly be deciding who, who will be best at this job. And it, so I, I think that. That for that reason, the five minutes again, whether it, or even if it's a written. Letter interest, like I don't really care what way we go about it. If we want it to be sort of less. Of a spectacle, I can understand that because we do want this to sort of remain. You know, al- almost apolitical sort of chair. I, I can understand that. I can appreciate that intention. And so maybe a. A letter of interest in our packet is a, a less sort of fanfare, uh. Approach that would still get us to a similar place. Um, but I think like some way of introducing. Folks who maybe aren't, haven't been privy to working together for years would be. Would be very helpful, um, for, for the process. And then the second thing I just wanna say about the process generally, I think. You know, what's important is that like, we can't necessarily control. How many people are gonna put their hats in and how, you know, if it's gonna. Transition in a predictable way, if it's gonna transition in an unpredictable way. And so we need to have a process. That works regardless of how many people end up on the ballot, year to year. It's gotta be flexible.
So then here's a proposal, then why don't we, because I understand what you're saying as well. So why don't you just. Not let the new, the new constituent or the new uh, counselors that are coming in. Why don't they just not vote that year? Cause they wouldn't know. And then the boards, the counselors that are still left sitting there are the ones that know the team and know who. Came to step into that leadership role. They're the ones that have the vote that stays instead of the new one.
I, I'm not sure that we could do that. I mean, at that point, we would basically be like disenfranchising a whole. Whoever put those people from their ward in those spots, like they wouldn't have an equal say in who becomes leadership.
Well, they still don't.
They will though, because they're the ones that will wind up, I believe that election is held. After they've been sworn in.
Yeah, that's right.
So they will be voting for that mayor and that vice mayor. That's why they're allowed to join in. In the, that whole process, because they are.
They're duly seated at that point.
So with all of that said, then I see where you're saying with the straw poll and you should go back to the way that you originally said it. Knowing that historical knowledge. Of how we got to where we were.
So I see two things here. Hold on, sorry, I'm just thinking.
Not four?
I see a couple things here.
So, so are we gonna rank choice?
So, let me just say, it sounds like rank choice, we're talking about rank choice versus. The conversation of just going back to traditional, um, voting, um, ranked tier as if, if you will. Um, and whoever gets the most votes. And then also about the conversation of how to have the, um, conversation of communication. Um, of people that are interested, whether that's. Um, I think it's a good, it could be a letter of interest or it could be a stump speech, if you will. I don't wanna call it a stump speech, but, but um, an interest. Um, I think both are good ideas. So I see those two kind of glaring right at the moment. And I vote on what they, what they want. I mean, we've had enough discussion on it. Are you guys comfortable with that?
We can see. Can we go item by item?
Yeah, let's do that. All right. So first, let's go with the rank choice. Um, who would be in support of rank tr- continuing rank choice moving forward?
I am, but I'm ambivalent. I could go either way.
Yeah, yeah. I'm ambivalent as well, so.
I mean, nearly, I'm doing my homework up here, uh, on the spot, uh, cause I, I, I think I'm wrapping my head around, uh. Counselor Kathy's reference to the Alaska election and the sense that there was some controversy about that in, in the way that rank choice voting plays out. And it sounds like there's some solutions to that. Um, I'm looking at something called Boarders Rule, which is rather than ranking, uh. Uh, your top pick gets a certain amount of points. And so then it's, uh, you know, whoever has the most points, not necessarily the most first place votes, I, you know. I'm, uh, I'm just now learning about this a- at the moment, but I see merits to that and I think there might be. Um, you know, that's worth consideration, uh, because it sounds like it's probably more fair in that sense. But I liked rank choice. It seems like it. Benefits. I'm okay. I'll say.
Along that line, isn't that, and actually because they did assign points to them. Isn't that where actually the, the second place guy wound up winning? Because he wound up getting all of the second place votes, but literally none of the first place votes. And because of the way everything else split up.
And then that wouldn't happen for us because Flor said they throw out anyone without a first place. So it would naturally happen for our range.
Counselor, so I'm doing research on the fly as well. And so what I'm learning is that. There is no singular definition of rank choice voting. And so.
Different type, yeah.
If, yeah, if, if council decides to implement some form of rank choice voting. I think it would be coming upon us to do a little more research and come back with a recommendation or at least some information on. What permutation of it. We could use, cause, cause in some systems, you, you have to get. First place, what would Stephen make the cut to the second? So, so in that scenario, the second place person could never win. But if you start assigning. Values to it depending on the spread, then you could have a different outcome of it. There's, there's pros and cons. There's lots of critiques, lots of information out there, but. It's not a singular concept.
Flor, have you, in the two years we've been doing this, seen any major concerns about rank choice?
I haven't. Um, the times that we went through it. When we counted them out, it was very easy to see where the majorities were. And like I said, the very first time, it was a clear majority. We didn't have to count out people to get there. And that is one thing, the reason we originally started, we had three people and nine council members. And so we didn't wanna have a three-way tie. And then try and figure out how you, so rank choice is easier for doing that because we have. Nine people and sometimes, you know, it could be a three-way tie, which is hard to just knock somebody off and do a runoff. Um, so it, it solved our problems. We didn't have any problems with it. We had a definition that we gave. All of you at the top of your ballot, how we were going to count them. So my suggestion would be that we would just put that in the resolution of rank choice. And here's how we're gonna do it.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just one other, it, the last time we, we did this kind of on the fly, we only had eight counselors. And so we had an even number and that's what led. To, to the issue. So, so typically with nine counselors, we wouldn't have.
Outside of this last time for. The vice mayor's position, I think both other times, basically it was a majority. That you didn't even have to go to the second or the third. So again. Why are we doing it? We are electing people on the first ballot with a majority of the votes.
So, so I, I feel like we've talked, talked this and we debated it and I think we need, we can vote on it. And I am ambivalent, I guess, there's no skin off my back either one, but if you're supportive of the rank choice. I don't see that it's a bad process. I don't think it's a terrible process. I think our staff has done vetting of it. I think they've done a good job on it. Um, it seems to have worked. But if you guys, if the majority of the council wants to go back to the traditional way, again, I'm, I'm very ambivalent with it. Um, and so, um, I'd like to do that instead of us talking it, um, getting into the next two hours, but go ahead.
I would like to avoid it for the next three years. Traditional voting has no interpretation, right? You will, we pick the talk to, we vote, we're done. I'm gonna change my vote. I don't wanna keep talking about rank voting for the next three years.
Or just get real straws.
Yeah, real straws. Okay, so a rank choice, if you're in support of rank choice.
We'll need to determine then what the. There's no such thing as traditional voting.
And I shouldn't say traditional. But they'll have to be, so now, now, yeah, sorry.
I mean, either way, we, we need a policy for runoff.
Right.
But you can come to us with a proposal to that.
If you wanna do that, Flor. What's that?
A compromise.
But I do think that, so with that said, I do believe that adding in the five minutes is important and up to five minutes. Um, just because I do remember coming on council and we were supposed to vote and I had no clue and I think. Um, Counselor Nail didn't vote because at that time, because he said he didn't correct, if I remember right. And so I think that it is important, some kind of information for the new people.
Also, they have an option, whether they can or they can't.
I've got to agree with the, the five minutes is good. At least every other year, just for the reasons that Amber and Lisa and. And I would, and Brandy, and I would have to, and I would have to agree with it, that basically, yeah. The, the new people may not know squat about any of us and they need to know about that.
My suggestion, my suggestion would be as though that we don't do it every other year. I, I think. Even with it every year, and I think it's a good opportunity for, um, uh, for us to be able to say. Hey, look, this is what it is and, and this is why we wanna do it. It doesn't even have to be five minutes. It can be three, three to five minutes of. Party set council members, whatever you wanna do. Yep, just an elevator pitch of what you wanna do. Jack?
Thanks. Um, is that, so is that something done in executive session or that's something?
I think we can come up with that, right?
So, I'm sorry, did, in public or in executive session?
That's, I don't think we've come up, come up with that yet. I would just say we, we get to come up with that today. Yeah, yeah. Does council want that in the executive session or do they want that in public, I guess? I mean, we can.
I meant to go back and watch our conversation about this in the past. We've had that discussion before, I believe. I don't, uh, cause I think I initially. Uh, advocated for doing it in a public meeting and I don't remember what the. Points were on either side, unfortunately.
Flor, do you remember how they did it in the executive class time, so?
Uh, your honor, members of council, so yes, the, there was discussion of it. You're right, you were the one who spoke in favor of doing it in public and council indicated their support. Um. We've reviewed the minutes and basically all I can tell you is that there was a majority who indicated support to do it in public. And, um, all, all lines that we came up with were. all, all lines that we came up with were the ones that council forwarded as indicating support, so that was last time.
Um, I'm, I'm sorry, thank you for the clarification. So is there a reason you did this most recent round in exec? If that was kind of the direction we gave last time.
Mr. Mayor, councillor, this last time was a complete aberration from what we have done in the past. Because we were in a hurry, we needed some leadership, staff needed guidance. Uh, moving into the very next Tuesday, um, I would not use the last time as any ruler or measure of how it should be done from now on. Because hopefully we won't have to do that again, particularly in light of what we need to talk about next.
So is council okay with it just being in public, that we would just do that in public? All right. All right, anything else?
So, Mr. Mayor, I, I, I um, I'm a little nervous, Stephen suggests what we may need to hear next, but uh, in the event that we do have just a wicked, crazy tie situation, I, it would help us to be able to enumerate that in the resolution as well. Um, would council have patience with Flor to be able to tell us just briefly what we would do to deal with that?
Absolutely, we, we made our bed, we not playing it, so. We voted for it, so.
So in the event that we have this, you know, we'll say even a three-way tie, or what the mayor position, cuz, cuz we're assuming that we're gonna have just a whole flexibility of people wanting to be in leadership regardless of whether or not they've been a vice mayor. Or they've been on the council for three years, or one year, or, or a brand new. We need to be able to accommodate that uh from the traditional voting standpoint regardless. So, my question becomes, when we do have ties and so on, what's the steps we should take?
So, off the top of my head, I'm not really sure what we would do if we had a three-way tie. That was the research we put into, um, and that's what we came up with. I don't wanna say it out loud, but ranked choice was because we were trying to figure out how we would handle a three-way tie. Because basically, if you have nine council members, and if three people are putting their names in the hat, and three people vote for each of them, you just have to come out and announce you have a three-way tie. If you have a two-way tie, that's easy, you come out and say, this person's off, please vote between these two. There's no opportunity for a runoff with a three-way tie. So whether we put something in the resolution saying you can't have three nominees, can't have that number, you have to have two or four.
Yeah.
You're going into a ranked choice. Those were, those are basically our options, which is why we suggested it.
Go, Amber.
It, could we, in the event of a three-way tie, just move to ranked choice ballot, in, in that circumstance only?
Sure, we can.
Instead of runoff.
Whatever council wishes.
I guess.
You said that, come.
So I guess part of this is that, because I have served on multiple boards, where in our bylaws, it, you know, you had a treasurer, you had a vice president, president, past president, and then everybody just moved up. Couldn't we just kind of make that part of the ordinance, and then really, then all you're doing is, then it's not it's just for one position, not both?
No.
I think so, I think we can.
It's a huge mess, because based on where you're at in your term, you may not, we would only then be able to elect people who are a very specific point in their four-year term to that seat, because they've gotta have at least two years left to get to this seat. So it, it creates a whole strange sort of scenario in terms of how that hierarchy goes.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Flor, you highlighted the scenario that was running through my head earlier of three candidates and a three-way tie. Rather than going with a traditional election and runoff, reverting to a ranked choice if we have that scenario. Uh, I, I, I think the point got brought up earlier that we've been using ranked choice, and we've never had to utilize its, you know, abilities, um, or the traits of that election side, and so I, I guess, I think we already cat a vote, I guess, maybe, but uh I, I still think ranked choice, at least in my opinion, it solves that scenario, and more often than not, it's gonna be a traditional election. Uh, regardless of who you pick for two or three, the majority's gonna get the first place votes a lot of the time, and so um, to me, it makes it less complicated if we move forward with ranked choice rather than doing traditional and runoff, and then also all these scenarios where we would have to revert to another system. It, that seems overly complicated to me, but that's just my opinion.
Jenna?
So, I still like the traditional, still see value in it. I understand that in a, in the event of a tie, three-way, that that is where the ranked choice could override it by that for to do a runoff. But then I also think that we should have something in there where you term out, because that is also something that is done on board, on boards, to keep it fresh, and to keep leadership fresh, as you get in a position, you can only have it for you know, two years and that, or three years in a leadership position, as far as like mayor, and without, and then you term out of it. You get what I'm saying? Kind of like not being clear. But then.
Term limits?
Yeah, I mean, well, it, like saying, because, I mean, even before, like Ray and Steve would switch back and forth or whatever, but if you're in the same, which is fine, but if you're in the same position as mayor for, say, three years, the fourth, by then, you would term out. Obviously, well, you'd have to be reelected too, but then you have to take a year off, or maybe two years and take a year off from being in that position, and I don't know.
Brandy?
I'm really sorry. John, didn't you get to vote for mayor this time, or did you not get to vote?
Just this most recent? No, it was after.
Okay, so the, you outgo, but you were a part of the straw poll, weren't you?
Not for this.
Okay, you guys didn't do that.
No.
I was thinking that the three that are no longer here had participated in the straw poll, they were just there, they didn't vote.
Correct.
Oh, thank you. I would like to change my vote back. I am really sorry, but this is so long and dumb and.
You want us to hear on?
We can, yeah.
So I think some of the, uh, worries of having this discussion continue over and over might be alleviated by the fact that we want to put this in a resolution. So once we decide today, we'll do a resolution, you can pass it, and then from now on, that will just be how it's done, so we won't have to bring this to you every year, or again.
Paper, rocks, scissors?
Okay. And that we've calmed down this road again, I um will take a re-vote on ranked choice versus the other, since based upon some of this. Um, if you would like ranked choice, give me a thumbs up.
And they're gonna specify no second place winners.
I don't rate it, let's just skip that.
Thank you. So ranked choice.
Okay, yeah. It turns out I'm not ambivalent, I'm sorry.
After further discussion. No, it's all good. This is, this is what it looks like, it's all right. Okay. So we did, yeah, right, so we did do, we did say five minutes in public. Yeah, would you mind one more time?
We have to go and get it through. Okay, so we have nomination process, the, um, you'll get those to the clerk. Clerk will check to make sure everyone accepts their nomination, put together ballot, uh, five minutes in public explanation from the nominees. Then there's the straw poll, which will be done in exec, we'll use ranked choice, and then the clerk and attorney will count and tally the ballots. We'll put this in a resolution to memorialize this, and we will state in there that you can't have a second place winner with the runoff, or with the ranked choice.
See, now I'm gonna throw a lion's head on. Well, it is my life minutes I'm burning up now, but in the past, before the last couple of years, you could put your name in for both mayor and vice mayor. And if you were in the mayor's race and lost, you could actually wind up being nominated for the vice mayor's position. And then I think two years ago, we said you have to make a choice, one or the other. So if you lost out in the mayor's race, you couldn't run for vice mayor. Now, do we wanna continue with that process, or do we wanna change that?
Change it.
How does council feel about that? Go ahead.
I vote change it, so that whoever runs for mayor, if they don't get it, then they can be put on the ballot for vice mayor.
They can?
They can.
Oh, they can?
Yeah. I'm actually. Because then that way, it pleases with a traditional way and your straw poll way.
You just see a problem with that, Flor?
No, I, I think that's traditionally how it was done.
Traditionally?
Council okay with that?
Yes.
Yeah, that's good, I think everybody's good with that, Flor.
Last year, it was that one.
Yeah, no, I, I understand what you're saying, yeah, yeah.
No more questions from this table.
So, if somebody is upper state in both offices, we'll have to um, do the election for the mayor, and then like redo the nominations for the vice mayor, cuz it may um, change the ballot, right? So we'll need to do one and then the other.
Yeah.
I mean.
Your Honor, in the past, I've always prepared ballots for all of the nominees who would move on or could not, so that we, I'd have a few different versions based off who won. And so those are all ready to go for council.
We appreciate you, Flor.
That it, Flor?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Oh, thank you.
Not for the easy part.
So we're not done yet with this. It's gonna get a little more controversial, Flor. Else.
I'll say, the same thing. Keep this conversation.
So, Your Honor, the uh, the proposal that staff would offer for removal, kinda shifting gears here, is uh, number one, that it be a super majority of the council. And that could be for one or for two of the leadership position, right? Uh, number two, that indeed, that uh, if indeed the, the folks that are subject, or the person that is subject to said proposal, be allowed a public hearing if they request it. And uh, the other one that, that was suggested in leadership, that I, you know, I throw out there, I think it's a pretty good idea. If, if the mayor is a person that is a subject of the removal, the vice mayor, and that is successful, the vice mayor automatically ascends to that role on an interim basis until a, you know, the, the formal process in November, December takes place. And all this would be captured in an ordinance that the attorney's uh office would help us craft, pursuant to whatever you say.
And I think the, the idea behind the vice mayor just going um and taking the mayor's seat, um, the vice mayor works pretty closely already, and is doing that, and is able to transition in, and it kind of takes that, that opportunity for the vice mayor to be able to take the leadership, and I think that if we just do that traditionally, um, that's kind of what I think we were looking at. And it's being interim, it's of an extra, it's an extra poll, right? Yeah, absolutely. Uh, Stephen and Amber.
Can it be worked similar to like a vote of no confidence, that basically it would be a, a simple, anybody here could call for a vote of no confidence, and then it would take a simple majority to then take it on to the hearing phase, that at that point, then it would take the two-thirds majority to.
Mayor, councillor Cathy, so you're hitting exactly what my next question was going to be, and that is, how, how would we initiate that process? I think your proposal makes a lot of sense, where a simple majority could, could start the process, and then if the mayor, uh, vice mayor who's subject to that vote of no confidence, if you will, uh, could request a public hearing, then it would take a, a super majority to then remove them uh from uh that position of leadership.
Amber?
Um, yes, that was a question that I had in the memo as well, and I was thinking along the same lines, you know, it should be a, less than a simple majority to start the process. Um, I can understand the reasoning for requiring us, uh, less than a super majority, sorry. Uh, I can understand the reasoning for wanting a super majority, it's a big deal to remove somebody from leadership, so I think that's fair. Um, I'm feeling a little bit uneasy about the automatic move from vice mayor to mayor, only because we don't know what circumstances around, like said, removals could be, and so I hate to box ourselves into a, a particular situation, um, that then we have to also take into account as to, you know, I, I would like to leave all of our options open, um, knowing that we would take into account, um, you know, as we did in this scenario, we put Ray there because you had experience. I think that any council would take into account, like, who's experienced and can step in an interim basis, whether that's a vice mayor or somebody else. Um, I just, I feel a little bit nervous trying to think about all the different scenarios that might result in this type of action, and having any sort of prescription as to who's gonna sit there makes me feel nervous in a uncertain circumstances.
I, I would agree with Amber's second part, portion of that, as well.
Well, thanks, Mayor, uh, yeah, to councillor Paulitz's points, um, I, I would agree with that, because if we chose to remove a vice mayor, then we just have an open slot, and there's no mechanism to fill that, so I, you know, I, I think we probably need to have another election or something like that, just cuz otherwise we're going without a vice mayor for who knows.
So, i- in the event of that, Eric, if it's a vice mayor that's removed from leadership, we would have to have a, either have an election, or the mayor would appoint. I, cuz when I was mayor, after Steve left, I think we.
We had an election.
We did an election, yeah, that's right, yeah.
Mayor, you said there were too many people owning the position that, you said, you, you advocated your.
That's right, yeah, yeah, exactly. I don't wanna make anybody mad.
That would be totally uh fine, um, we could certainly craft an ordinance, I would say, you know, upon the removal of the mayor, um, the vice mayor would temporarily uh take the leadership until uh an election could be held, as, as soon as practicable or something to that effect, in the event that the vice mayor is removed, then uh, you know, that'll remain vacant until uh an election could be held, and, and I'm thinking like, in a matter of like a week. If we have this previous resolution, then we'll be able to slide right into that and do it very seamlessly.
So, perfect, yeah, okay, more like that, yeah.
I think what's important is that we don't have to have an election in thirty seconds.
Yeah.
So, even if the vice mayor moves into mayor position until we have, the nomination whole process took us like, what, two weeks? So even if it's a two-week process, I think we just need to have it, and I think it makes sense to have the vice mayor move into mayor until, and if that's not, until the next one and the vice mayor stays, if we have drawbacks, fine, but two weeks is fine, right? We picked him as the vice mayor.
Yeah.
And then we're not having this, we're not sure if somebody wanted to be nominated or any of these things, and we have our time to follow these rules we made.
Yeah.
Good point.
That's fair.
So, the suggestions by the city staff is a super majority, um, with the also, with the simple majority to start the process from the council, with the super majority to remove um leadership. Um, so I say leadership, both mayor or vice mayor, either or, um, they are allowed a public hearing, and then the public hearing, is that gonna be in front of the, in us, and, and I think it's laid out in here, if I'm correct in that. Um, and then, upon request, though, they can, that's their request, but they don't have to have that. And then, um, having a process, our mechanism where the vice mayor would temporarily, I mean, if it's the mayor, would temporarily become, uh, or would, uh, interim period would sit um, until we can have our, an election for a full mayor, uh, till that, till the next full election. Um, and then if it's the vice mayor, um, that seat would probably be open until we could do um some type of an election. Think I got that all together?
Basically, the vice mayor becomes mayor pro temp.
Right.
Until the election, and then you wind up then electing mayor and vice mayor, as councillor Haskins was mentioning.
Regularly scheduled election or newly scheduled new election?
Within the, within the course of, it would be a quick, uh, uh, election within like two weeks.
Okay, newly scheduled election.
Newly scheduled election, which would fill the, whatever time is left on the term, if that makes sense.
Yep.
So, right, right, and like for me, it would, it was like three months, I think is roughly what the term would have been till the next full, Amber?
Um, just for clarification on the very start of the process, we need a, a simple majority to kick it off. Um, how, how do we arrive at, at a simple majority? Is, is it one individual can call for a vote of no confidence in a? at a simple majority? Is it one individual can call for a vote of no confidence in a in a meeting? Like what is, how does, how do we get to five of us deciding that there's going to be a removal process?
Mayor, Councilor, you know, I think there's a couple ways you can do it. I mean, one would be that any member could request that the mayor put that issue on an agenda and then there would be a a vote basically in the full. Um. Well, I guess that's the mayor.
You ask the mayor to put on the agenda for their own removal?
Yeah, I don't think that's true.
You know, I mean, so to to get it on, there'd be some mechanisms to get it on the agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go ahead. Yeah, I, you know, I I don't know why it would be any different than the process you go through to get an item on the agenda now.
Okay.
You know, because it's essentially get what's put on the agenda and everybody around the table says yay or nay and it's done.
And that winds up in essence becoming that first vote of the simple majority.
Yeah.
Only it ought to be brought up at a regular council meeting, not a work session, because then it is an actual binding vote. Does that make?
That does make sense.
Yeah.
So would, so would it be would it be at, let's say, like what Steve is saying, that it's it's at a regular council meeting, talking, council member brings it up, says, I'm, you know, I'd like to bring uh a removal process for the mayor and want to see if I have the support. Would that be the moment where that simple majority happens or is it splitting it on a work session?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I I would suggest that a business meeting probably does make sense in terms of the forum.
Okay.
And, you know, given that you're all assembled, even though you may be at the round table portion of the agenda, um it's still a public pronouncement and uh it is still driven by simple majority.
Okay.
And and Mayor and Councilor, yeah, I I think that makes sense because you're not making a substantive determination
Right.
on the removal. It's just whether or not to start the process. So I think I think that makes a lot of sense. And then it would go.
Yeah, if it's to start the process, hey, we want to start this process. We'll do that. Was that what you were gonna say? No? Okay, go ahead.
Don't even try.
Uh, I I am good with all that. I uh am a little bit concerned with the notion that it can only happen during a business meeting.
Thank you.
Only that it it might be time sensitive. In many cases, I assume it would be. So in that case, would we request a special meeting be called after work session? Would that be the mechanism to get into a business meeting?
Meaning if we don't have two weeks and.
If we, if it's more pressing than a two week turnaround time, yes.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilor, I, yeah, I think that would be the mechanism. I I would want it in a in a normal meeting because it is some formal action. So it it and so to do it in a work session, I don't think we'd be compliant with the requirement in ordinance. But certainly, you know, you could have a special meeting, a one item special meeting to 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 do that. So if it was, if it was time sensitive, certainly.
Um, and how, so it, let's say the mayor is the subject of this situation. Typically, I think the mayor calls a special meeting. So what is the mechanism if we are cannot rely on the mayor to call a special meeting?
Mr. Mayor, uh the direction we received the last time, this was a possibility, uh we we needed the um the pronouncement of a councilperson in writing requesting the special meeting in the absence of the mayor's willingness to do so.
So a single councilperson could request a special meeting formally.
Five.
Five.
We needed that majority.
So I think, so I think that's what ended up happening.
That's, that is what happened.
Yeah, we got, we moved forward with five, the five said, yes, we want a special meeting.
In writing.
In writing.
Yeah, that's what we did the last time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead, Jen.
So, and that's done prior to the work session? The writing, I mean, you're, this isn't the circumstances that it's like now, right?
It needs to be done.
Yeah, so that that submission of the written piece has to be done ahead of the work session or during or kind of that or?
Yeah, I think if it's done at really any time
Yeah.
that it's submitted, once we have the five, that that can be set. So whether it's you know, before a work session, after a work session.
The the other thing, Mr. Mayor, that helped uh was that it was a date certain request. So the 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 writing uh were, excuse me, the request that was submitted, submitted in writing included the date that the meeting needed to be convened.
Okay.
And so that would probably need to be a feature as well. If if we are in that, you know, interim situation where we need to have it sent in later.
Okay. Ren.
I wish this was hypothetical. Okay, pretend we'd already done this. And now we're at the point where we are now having to do this. Okay. I decide I want to get a vote. Do I start by saying, hey, Carter? So I really feel like we need to have a meeting tonight. Will you see if you can find me five people? Or do I call Amber and say, hey, Amber? But really feel like I need five people. And I get my five people and then I call you and say, hey, Carter, I found five people. I want you to make this happen. Um what do I do? If this was gonna happen and this had already been on the books?
You know, my initial reaction, and of course, I'm kind of turning to the attorney here, would be that you have to be careful about conversing with
Exactly.
majority. Yeah, that's right. So I would say if indeed we have that, and I, my immediate reaction would be to call the mayor and say, hey, mayor, this request has been made by at least one of your colleagues. Are you willing to convene a special meeting? And in in the absence of that person being willing to convene that special meeting, then I would likely turn to the vice mayor and say, okay, vice mayor, we've got this request. Um, I, you know, I I need to 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 know if we have five people. I I would guess it would be who, probably the attorney, the clerk or myself to to make that communication. I don't think it's appropriate for council to do that. How do you, how do you feel?
No, Mayor, Councilor, um I I agree wholeheartedly. I don't don't think you want to be having those conversations um amongst each other. Um and even if it's just one on one conversation, but hey, I already talked to a counselor, you know, Gamroth, and he's on board, and then you you have some public meeting issues. Um and so I think in in that case, I think reaching out to staff, to the city manager, to myself, and then, you know, we can make those communications so that you're not running afoul of any old meetings laws.
That's one of those things.
I think I know why it's not on the books yet.
The what? I think, I think it's the thing about which I understand what you're saying, Jenna. I think it is, at least we're still giving them due process by a public hearing to, but to their peers. Um and I think I think the levity of the situation is is a, is if it's, if it rises to the occasion of having to remove somebody from leadership, not from their seat as this council member who's been, they've been duly elected by their, by their constituents. This is a, this is, would be a removal from the council from leadership because we voted for them. So it would give us the the I won't say the right, but it gives us the opportunity as we voted for that. But I think the levity of the situation has to rise to the occasion that it would, you know, be something where we would have to really be thoughtful of that and give them the due process. Um and be very thoughtful on on how to how to move forward with that. And um it's, I mean, am I, am I correct in saying that?
Mayor, I I think that's uh correct. Uh you know, as you recall, there is a process in ordinance for removing a member from council, and that's much more robust. It has to be for specific reasons. Uh there has to be an outside hearing examiner retained. They have to make an independent finding and 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 that makes sense because in that case, you're essentially saying that you are elected to this position, but we're gonna overrule that election and remove you for for this specific reason. In this case, leadership is elected by council um uh to represent council, as we previously discussed. And so I think that there's a little more latitude. And I think the proposal kind of is a good balance in my mind of giving council the ability to control who's representing you, but while at the same time providing an opportunity for due process. So I think that's where we tried to kind of thread the needle on.
And and I would want to caution too, because I understand what Jenna's saying. I would caution that if a mayor's, you know, you know, not doing anything immoral or wrong or unethical, that they're, you know, that maybe breached him the wrong way, but then be like, oh, we need to get a simple majority and we need to start this process. I mean, I I would would say that we need, this is something that needs to be on a an issue of grave importance, you know, um that would create that. Does that make sense, Jenna?
Well, yeah, that's what I was wondering. So like if they disagree, you know, yeah, exactly what you said.
Yeah. Yeah. But I understand, I know what you're saying.
I don't like them here.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. You still need the super majority. Yeah.
Which is why I think that's a critical piece of it. I think it should, it should be a big deal to remove somebody. So a super majority would help with that.
Yeah. Yeah. Um. Anything else on that? Any other questions, I suppose, for Carter or Eric? Right. So it sounds like um if everybody's okay with the recommendation, like I can say them again, um if you'd like me to. Um. But it sounds like super majority, oh, excuse me, the simple majority to start the process, which could be done in a business meeting. Um, uh to get that process going. Um, there are a lot of public hearing and then, of course, the voting uh mechanism uh to replace leadership within a timeframe um as quick as possible to to reelect or to uh put them back into their seats or the people back into seats. Um, is that fair? Statement?
Okay.
Okay. Um if you're good with that, just give give a thumbs up for city staff. Carter, then you guys are gonna draft your ordinance based around this?
Okay. Which you will have a public hearing to address and uh three readings and everything else. So there's a lot of time to talk about this, but at least we have a start
Yep.
with regard to what this should look like.
And that's what I wanted to make sure to. I know we talked a lot about it, but especially for this, but we'll have an opportunity to talk about it um in the public um sphere um for a business meeting. It'll be good to have one more conversation. Thank you. That was a great conversation.
It was.
The first one, it was a little, okay, it wasn't wasn't seamless, the first one.
It's like, maybe it shouldn't assign value to just.
I think if you take the pie, the process is in the square root.
There was definite conversation happening. Some firm.
Oh, well. Uh it worked. Uh gender review. Carter, she got the thing for us.
Yeah, just a couple things uh real quick. Um. Mr. Mayor, uh counselors, you know, as you look at your grid document, you probably noticed that we are ambitiously anticipating that uh the resolution for the leadership selection process, only the selection process would be coming forward on the twenty first. Uh so pursuant to progress we make with regard to writing that resolution, uh you you could see that uh coming up next Tuesday, but uh that's okay with all of you. Um, we, one of the other things that you may be interested in seeing, uh we do have a uh request from the Caster to come and visit with you all in pre-meeting next week as well with regards to uh a term and update, a potentially a proposal. You will be receiving a letter along those lines that lays that out much more clearer than what I'm uh, you know, sharing with you tonight. I would also point your attention to the meeting on the twenty first. Uh we do anticipate hearing um or, you know, having in front of you the professional service agreement that puts together the uh the design uh portion of the second sheet of ice uh and and the expansion at the ice arena. Now, some of you have asked, what is their deadline in terms of raising the private side of these dollars? And that deadline is actually June thirty. So uh, you know, they they their time is ticking. But they do believe that having this design will help them in their fundraising effort. So that's why this is coming forward now. Not indication of having been done with that fundraising effort. Uh, you also see the work sessions and what it is that we uh have on the docket for your review. And starting, of course, on the twenty eighth and moving throughout the rest of the year. As always, I like to turn your attention to the back page, future agenda items, to make sure we've got reflected appropriately the items that you are expecting to see on the horizon. If not, we would be pleased to take that direction from the council tonight.
Everybody anything on there that they're hoping to see soon?
The judge's evaluation, is that going to be during executive on this twenty first?
That would be during executive.
And then if she wants to speak with us, will she have the opportunity during her quarterly for the pre-meeting?
Uh.
Or do I need to ask about that one?
My understanding is that any uh dialogue that needs to happen pursuant to performance evaluation from any of your employees would uh be willing the council would be willing to entertain an executive session.
Okay.
Quarterly updates would not be the appropriate forum for that type of conversation.
So if she does request that, there would be time maybe on the fifth?
Any second.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay. Does anybody have anything that they'd like to see added on there? Yeah, go ahead.
Uh I'd actually advocate a removal. Uh I was the one that brought it up, formation of additional advisory committees. I brought this up probably a couple of years ago. Because Cheyenne created a tech advisory committee. It's something in theory I would love, but uh uh, you know, we haven't touched it for two years and just uh um um I'd welcome somebody to introduce it again in the future if uh we're really gonna know about it, but I just don't see that gaining momentum anytime in the near future. So just for the sake of saving a little bit of tone here.
Counsel, okay with removing that off for the time being?
Yeah.
That's.
So.
Yeah.
And I, the, I know it says uh December for the leadership straw poll. Probably ought to put it on probably the twelfth, shouldn't we? At the work session?
Sure, yeah, whatever council would like.
Well, before the end of the year, we're running out of year.
Flor, what do you and Amanda think?
Yeah, you will.
Okay, put it on the twelfth. Okay. Counsel, okay with it being on the twelfth?
Yeah.
Okay.
We didn't look at.
Yeah.
Looked at the schedule.
It's good. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, one more thing. Uh generally, we typically, we will ask you about having when your last meeting of the year would be. Ostensibly, you could have a meeting on the twenty sixth of December. Um, we are open to your recommendation in that regard.
I'd like, I'd like to make it move not to have it on the twenty sixth. Um some families are gonna be out of town. Um I know last year we kind of decided not to, and I don't think there's a reason for us to have to during, especially during the Christmas and holiday season, so. I mean, we could if we want to.
When am I gonna give you all my Christmas presents?
You can do it on the twenty first. Or on the, on the nineteenth.
Ah, well, that's.
Is there, is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. So you're gonna, Carter, not having it on the sixth, the twenty sixth there. All right, any legislative review?
No, sir.
All right, council around the table. We'll start with you, Jay.
Um, I I don't really have anything um other than, we just got that email about pedestrians getting hit and I noticed on my drive over, it really is like the worst time of year to be driving. Um, like at, when everybody, the high, high traffic times. So I guess it's just be careful, watch out for people walking around, especially since it's warmer than it usually is. So that's it.
Jenna.
Trying to get in this mood now. So um, let's do a couple things. First off, I noticed, but it's a question for the fire chief up there.
Yeah.
Did you guys paint the front doors at station number one?
We did.
All right, that's it. No, but it looks like fresh and new right now.
Yeah, it's been a few months, but
Has it?
It was a needed uplift.
Yeah, so I just well, noticed today and I thought, wow, that is really nice looking.
Thank you.
So anyways, I don't know how many times, maybe it was the first time I went by in a month. But anyhow, so there was that. Um see, oh, I was gone, so I'm sorry. I was gone last week. I'm sure everybody missed me terribly. I attended the um Western Governors Association Conference over in um Jackson. It was Wyoming's year to host because they they switch states every year. So it was a fabulous event. I uh went, I self-paid to go. And then uh just as a learning experience and to hear some of the hot topics that um involve all of the states in the West, so it was a nice experience to go and learn and do some professional development over there. So that was nice. The other things I wanted to mention are Candlelight is gonna be happening over at Fort Casper. It's an opportunity. It's a free event. It's really cool. They do the whole Christmas of the 19th century, the Western frontier. So everything's in candlelight and fireplaces. And so it has that, that nice old time Christmas feeling. So that is December 2nd, 5:30 to 8:30. And that's on a Saturday, so it's coming up. So do that. Um, it's actually, I want to put a credit out there to Platt Bridge Company. They work really hard and they're the ones that Fort Casper uses a lot to do those reenactments. And they, they have young kids that dress up in pioneer and civilian outfits and then also Calvary. So they always help, good supporters of the Western heritage of the 19th century. So they help the Trail Center and they help Fort Casper. Um, the Christmas parade is coming up. We all know this. The 25th, which is a Saturday, so it's exciting. Getting down the 17th is the last day to register and float if you want to participate. We have 71 floats so far. So it's gonna be fabulous. We're also doing a toy for tots drive. So they'll have stuff the van down there, those two different things, same thing. And you stuff the van, it's gonna be parked stationary down by David Street Station on the side. So encourage a lot of people to come and throw some toys into that van prior to the tree lighting at 6:00 and then the parade kickoff at 6:30. So all of that is out there. We're winding down. Open parade organizing and staging efforts here. So, um, let's see, I think I have one other. Yeah, I had, well, I had the same thing that Shaiyan mentioned about the pedestrians. It is dark, but I also just wanted to throw it out there that because it's getting darker and if you don't want to get hit, try to wear some visible clothing to help, you know, people see you better as you're going. But Like I'm not feeling That is what I've got.
I rode my bike tonight.
Well.
Don't scare him.
I already asked him. It's okay. Wear a safety vest. Don't worry, Jenna, he's on it.
Chief, can you get me a safety vest?
Help yourself, help yourself, okay?
Or please, I'm for home.
At headlamp?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. Wanted to congratulate Jackie, we congratulated earlier, but also Amanda Ainsworth on her promotion to city clerk. Sounds like she's been with the city for seven years. So it's just really cool to recognize these promotions, but also the fact that we have so many long-term employees at the city. So it's really cool. Obviously speaks a lot to the culture and, uh, yeah, kind of workplace environment that we have here. I'm glad some of the people have such dedication and commitment to the City Casper. We had a Casper Council meeting a couple of Sundays ago. I think I failed to mention that in my last, in our last meeting. So just wanted to update the council on where they're at. They just kicked off their 23, 24 session. There's a break during the summer because kids are doing kid stuff. So wanted to thank Mayor Patekko and City Attorney Nelson for attending those meetings and interacting with those kids. It sounds like Chief McPeters is gonna be attending this Sunday. And then the city manager and Chief Black with the Fire Department are queued up for next month. Um, we can look forward to having some NC and homeschool representatives on that board. That's something I think is really cool is that they're getting representation from kids from the Underaccompanied Student Initiative, from homeschool, from all three major high schools. So just trying to make as, you know, make that board as comprehensive and as diversified as possible to represent all the kiddos that age. They are working to schedule some student forums that Kate up and potentially NC. So you may see some invites for that in the future. And then they're also working to relaunch their youth assessment in January to kind of keep up with those data collection efforts. At a DDA board meeting last Wednesday, we discussed revitalizing some of the subcommittees and being more aggressive with achieving some of the tasks we identified during our strategic planning sessions. I saw Oil City News published an article today with some more information about that if you're interested. So I'd encourage you to check that out. There was a DDA and DCBA Downtown Casper Business Association mingle event last Thursday. I was unfortunately unable to make it, but I'm glad to see those two groups are keeping in touch and trying hard to be better partners and collaborators since there's a lot of shared goals between the two entities. So. Um, you know, there'll be more of those events coming up, the Chocolate Walk, Small Business Saturday, I imagine.
Pink Friday.
Pink Friday, yeah. I imagine we'll lean on Jenna to keep us up to date on some of those things and I'll do my best as well. And then lastly, I just wanted to, it's a little bit more of a personal note, but Ford Wyoming Center just announced this past week Dropkick Murphys in February along with Pennywise and then also Hoseier in August. I love both of those bands. So just big kudos to the Ford Wyoming Center and their team. I think they're doing a really good job recruiting some good quality talent here and just different, you know, Dropkick Murphys is something that is very different for me. So just encourage people to buy tickets for those events. Both of the events, ticket sales start on Friday. So just please, if those are things that appeal to you, buy your tickets early, show support that you are gonna show up for these acts so that they can continue recruiting other different acts in the future. So yeah, just kudos to that team. I was, I was super pumped this past week, but they just kept dropping bombs.
I was gonna email Zulim. I was like, what?
Yeah.
Jamie?
Yeah, so I was super excited. So yeah, thanks to that team. You guys are doing a great job.
Thank you. Steve?
Basically, I missed the chamber meeting today because it was at 4 o'clock with us supposed to start here at 4:30. I don't know whether you made it or not, Jenna.
Yes, I had, that's why I was like two minutes late.
Okay.
Like 29:00 early.
Very good. So if she wants to give a report on the chamber meeting, you're more than welcome to. But otherwise, so had a joint powers water board meeting today and we went over the agreements for the transferring of the water rights from Wardwell to Bar Nun. And also the sending of a letter to the Attorney General's Office for suggestions and letting him know that we will be rewriting the 1995 working agreement to affect the Wardwell, Bar Nun transfer and the transfer of assets along with that. So all of that is kind of in the process. Been fighting in lawyers. Ready?
I actually don't have a whole lot. I took up most of the work sessions, so I'll keep it quick. I also was super excited about Dropkick Murphys. I'm a country girl, but I, something about that Irish band. So I say even if you don't like them, buy a ticket and go because you're gonna have a good time. And the event center is coming it. I am super stoked about the music we've been getting. So let's encourage that positive reinforcement. And aside from that, I don't personally know, but I do know a lot of people who personally know a handful of Wyoming teenagers who have taken their own lives in the last couple of months and we're just getting to the sad season. So hug your kids, pay attention. If you see something, say something. And of course, there's that 988 number, right? So talk to your kids, tell your kids to tell you if they see something with their friends. Hug them when you get home. Don't always have to like them, but let them know that they can listen to you because our teenagers are struggling and I'm super excited about the Youth Empowerment Council for that reason too. So.
You, I had an Economic Development Joint Powers Board meeting today. Two updates, I think, are relevant to y'all there. One, the Vance Casper, you know, on behalf of our area continues to participate in the statewide sort of exploration of where the state shooting complex is gonna be located. So there's been a number of like community listening meetings and our local representatives are actively engaged in those meetings to, you know, see what can be done to position Casper to be competitive in that bid for the state project. So they're engaged with that process. I think the last meeting was in Riverton and they, we had representation there. They're also engaged in a process which you may have heard of from other sources, but in case you haven't, the Reno Air Races are considering Casper in a relocation bid. And they currently have it narrowed to six cities and have been here in the last couple of weeks to do site visits. So we should know more soon about where they're on their process and narrowing the field further. Hopefully we'll continue to rise to the top of that list. It's relatively significant economic impact somewhere in the neighborhood of $100 million for our area. So that group is actively engaged in working with those folks to, to keep Casper on their list for that. I have an LDTQ Advisory Committee meeting this, on Friday. We did get, I have a little bit of a follow-up from the last update that that group provided to you. They referenced the HRC MEI, which is Human Resource, er, yeah. Human, it sounds like Human Resources Department, no. Human Rights Campaign Municipal Equality Index, which is a score that you've seen a few times over the past couple of years. The final scores were published and instead of achieving a 65, we actually achieved a 72. So higher than anticipated. I would just characterize that, the vast majority of that is as a result of forming the Advisory Committee, which has a liaison with the Police Department and with the city manager's office and then the non-discrimination ordinance. That's where the bulk of those points came from. And, you know, as far as I can tell, looking at where, and having Heidi, who's our staff liaison, who's amazing, be able to report directly to HRC rather than them just kind of doing a skim of our ordinances to see what we have. There were a number of points that we were able to capture from things we were already doing that haven't changed at all, but we just never received credit for in the past because it wasn't readily available necessarily without a conversation. And so now we have a direct connection to make sure that we're being accurately represented there. So yeah, it looks really good. And I would say, you know, for the most part, I feel very good that a lot of the bulky items in there have been addressed by this council and we've, you know, done some good work in that area. So. And then I have a Metro meeting tomorrow. So I'll have a, I'll have a couple more updates for you next week. And I somehow missed Regional Water, unfortunately, so I moved it back a week and I missed that memo. It stayed where it was in my calendar. So if it doesn't move in my calendar, then I don't know where I'm supposed to be, apparently. So, so unfortunately I missed that. So thanks to Steve for holding down the fort for us there.
Thank you. Appreciate it. First, Mayor.
Um, let's see here. We've got Panatomics coming into town this weekend. It's kind of sad I missed the opportunity to buy tickets. So it sounds like there's gonna be parking nightmare. The city's been doing a really good job on, on Facebook explaining where parking is and the shuttle and things like that. So if, if you got tickets and you're going, definitely check that out. Then I have Contractor Board meeting this Thursday and then breakfast with, with the mayor on Thursday morning with the county commissioners and then
Mayorship.
and the mayors and then breakfast Friday morning. So lots of breakfast this week.
It's the early mornings. Uh, yeah, so Council of Bevermans on Thursday at 7:00 AM at Agintons. And so that's usually been a very beneficial time. I'll talk a lot about that meeting, but it's a really good opportunity for the municipalities' leadership and then the county commission to kind of get together and to stay on the same page and to talk about certain things and talk about initiatives, et cetera. So, so I was looking forward to that. I'll be giving a proclamation at Pathways School on Thursday at 9:00 AM. They've asked me to do that teen challenge. That's what it's called. So I'm gonna be out there doing that proclamation. And then a few of us will be next Monday at Southridge 3rd Grade as they are discussing and studying local political process. And so I'm gonna hopefully take the video of us talking about that, ranked voting and take it to them.
Wait for an hour, ask their decisions.
To do that and see what happens. Just want, I need to know. I'll let you know when it works out. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, anyway, a few of us will be going to that. I'm looking forward to it. The teacher out there was one of my former youth group kids when I was a youth minister many years ago. So I've known her for a really long time. So I'm looking forward to going out there. So that's all we've got. So thank you so much and be safe tonight. Thank you.
So Jenna is gonna go too. I want the candy.